Good afternoon and welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission's November 3rd, 2022, open session. I note that Stephen Stoddard is serving as Secretary for today's meeting. Mr. Stoddard, would you please take the roll call?
Certainly. Commissioner Cozart? Commissioner Cozart? Commissioner McMahon?
I'm here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Argo? You know, I saw Commissioner Argo before. Chair White?
Here.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Argo. Commissioner Wright?
Here.
Commissioner Dixon? Commissioner Cash?
Present.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
And Commissioner Davenport?
Present.
Also noting that Marcel Acosta, Executive Director, Anne Skyler, General Counsel, and Diane Sullivan, Urban Design and Plan Review Division, are also in today's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Stoddard. Noting the presence of a quorum, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today's meeting is livestreamed and will be available in a few days as a video on NCPC's website. If there is no objection, the agenda as posted is adopted as the order of business. We will now play a short video clip of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
NCPC will continue to conduct its meetings online until renovations of the commission chamber are complete. We also are continuing to monitor public health requirements for in-person meetings. I want to share how we will be conducting commission business. During commission deliberations, I will use a round robin format to ask each commissioner if they have any comments. As a reminder, during deliberations, all commissioners should be on video during that time unless you are experiencing technical issues. At other times, when commissioners wish to be recognized, they should unmute and ask to be recognized. Next Agenda Item 2 is the Report of the Chair. My report is brief today. Following our discussion regarding the proposed redevelopment of K Street, at last month's meeting, I sent a letter to D Dot to share our comments. And with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item 3, which is the Report of the Executive Director, Mr. Acosta.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon. I have two announcements today. With almost 78 years of service with the commission, we bid a fond farewell to Camille Parks and CPC's Human Resources Specialist. She has accepted a position at the National Institute of Standards and Technology. Camille excelled in her role. It is one of the key reasons we have such a superb staff. We wish Camille all the best with her new position at NIST and thank her for her many years of outstanding service to the commission. I'd also like to note that our own Michael Sherman, CPC's Director of Policy and Research, will officially retire from the U.S. Army Reserve this Saturday. We thank Colonel Sherman for his decades of military service to our nation as Army reservists. We're also thrilled that Michael continues to serve our nation through his work at the commission. Congratulations, Colonel Sherman. And with that, that concludes my presentation. You have a written report in your packets, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Acosta. And I would like to say on behalf of the commission, I would also like to thank Ms. Parks for her service. She has done an outstanding job, and we wish her well in her new endeavors. And also to commend Colonel Sherman for his service to our country while carrying out his duties at NCPC and not missing a beat. We are fortunate to have Mike on our team, so congratulations on your retirement from the service. And with that, are there questions for Mr. Acosta? I hearing none. Let's move to Agenda Item 4, which is the Legislative Update. Ms. Skyler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two items to report, both of which address the issue of the creation of an LGBTQ+ museum. So the first bill, both bills were introduced at the end of September. There are slight differences in the two bills, which I'll try to note as I proceed. The first bill is HR 907. It establishes within the Smithsonian Institute a National Museum of American LGBTQ+ History and Culture, which among others shall provide for the collection study and establishment of programs and exhibits documenting the history of the American LGBTQ+ life, art, history, and culture. It establishes within the Smithsonian a council to, among others, make recommendations to the Board of Regents concerning planning, design, and construction of the museum. It also provides for the appointment of a museum director by the Secretary of the Smithsonian. Notably absent from the legislation is any reference to sites or site selection. So as currently written, it does not appear that NCPC will have a role in site selection, but will review the museum under its Planning Act authority. The second version of the bill, HR 970, actually establishes, rather than directly establishing a museum, establishes a commission to study the potential creation of a National Museum of American LGBTQ+ History and Culture. It requires the commission to submit a report to the President and Congress within 18 months after its first meeting with a plan of action addressing the feasibility of establishing and maintaining the museum. Issues to be addressed in the report include, among others, developing in consultation with the Smithsonian Institute criteria for evaluating the potential locations and examining the feasibility of the museum becoming part of the Smithsonian Institution. So one creates the museum, no reference of site. The other creates a commission to establish, to study the creation of the museum, and only directs the museum, the commission that is to look into the establishment of the museum to work with the Board of Regents relative to the site. So under both, there actually would be no role for NCPC in site selection. But we'll have to see how this plays out as it moves forward through Congress. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Skyler. Does the commission have any questions for Ms. Skyler? Hearing none. I wanted to go back for a moment. I saw that Commissioner Dixon has joined the meeting, and I want to make sure we capture that for our attendance. But Commissioner Dixon, I saw your camera come on, and I didn't know if you wanted to make a comment, and I didn't see it fast enough.
I'm just glad to be among you. I'm okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. With that, I want to announce there are no consent calendar items this month. And next Agenda Item 5A is an information presentation on Monumental Core Stormwater Flood Risk Management, which will be led by Ms. Acosta.
Chair White, I just got a note from Ms. Acosta that she was having a slight technical problem right now. So maybe we could move the flooding presentation to second and start off with the Pennsylvania Avenue presentation.
Thank you so much, Mr. Stoddard. We will do that. So let's move to Agenda Item 5B for an information presentation regarding the comments we've received on the Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative. So Mr. Jamalat, I believe we're going to be hearing from you, so thank you for being flexible and jumping into the presentation. Welcome.
All right. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Chair White and commission members. The purpose of today's information presentation is twofold: to provide a summary of public comments and to update the commission on the status of the Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative. I will cover the outreach and public comments portion. Then Director Elizabeth Miller will wrap it up with project updates. As you know, there was a lot of excitement around the project. When the commission released the plan in March, we are happy to report that the energy has compounded into a real momentum today. This momentum is also prompted by the urgency to rethink public space, economic development strategy, and the future of downtown in response to COVID. Just a quick recap. At the special meeting in February, the commission acknowledged that the avenue today is underutilized and not meeting its full potential. The fundamental use of the avenue could serve a higher purpose than just a thorough fair forecast. Federal and local stakeholders agree on the new vision that the avenue should be a beautiful street designed for people first, and the highest and best use of is the avenue as a venue elevated as America's stage for events of regional and national significance. We also agree that the avenue needs to be a better street for daily life that prioritized pedestrian, bike, and transit with more comfortable and engaging public spaces for people to enjoy every day, all day, and into the evening. We engaged the public about three conceptual ideas that look at different strategy to reimagine the street and achieve this vision. When the commission kicked off public outreach in March, we spent the next four months hosting public meetings and responding to questions, meeting one-on-one with a range of stakeholders, and receiving over 450 public comments. We learned from each engagement that people are motivated, inspired, and are very excited about the future of Pennsylvania Avenue. Coming out of COVID quarantine, NCPC staff was out and about on the avenue, talking with the public. Many people stopped at our tent to learn about their vision and concepts and how they can stay engaged moving forward. On the right, Wendy from DC Water told our Executive Director Acosta that we need more water features on the avenue. During outreach, we headlined over 15 major stories, including local papers, TV coverage, and radio interviews. We went on a side visit to Freedom Plaza and met a cat that traveled all the way from Upstate New York to experience Pennsylvania Avenue. In addition to the cat, we also spoke one-on-one with many stakeholders about what's next for the avenue to understand their priorities. This included a conversation with Access for All Committee at the Metro Washington Council of Government to help us understand the ADA compliance and best practice. Having the vision and three conceptual ideas as engagement tool helped people react, comprehend, and articulate their feedback. We did extensive analysis of the comments received via the website, direct email to staff, and official letters. We will use these three ideas and comments to inform the public space program and to develop the concept alternative. The alternative will be evaluated through NEPA and Section 106 consultation. Director Elizabeth Miller will explain this in more detail. So five major topics and trends emerge from our comments analysis. First, we learned that the skateboarding community cares deeply about the future design of Freedom Plaza. We also heard from the biking community that they want a dedicated and safer bike lane on the avenue that fit into the larger network in DC. We discovered that a lot of people want more green space, and they embrace a sustainable design strategy for the corridor. And like any planning project, people are concerned about traffic and access as they take a closer look as they take a closer look at how the street will be modified. Last but not least, we learned that many people are excited about bringing more events to the avenue. Moving forward, NCPC will work with consultants to address the feedback, recognizing the need to balance competing ideas and interests. As I mentioned earlier, the commission sees the avenue as a catalyst for economic development that can also provide a robust community asset. When we organize the comments by stakeholder groups, we heard similar feedback. The planning and design community, CFA, and the general public love the idea of a truly multimodal Pennsylvania Avenue. Many emphasize the operation and management will be a key element to success. Again, traffic impact came up quite often in the comments. We also heard that curbside management is critical. Property owners, residents, and event producers are enthusiastic about public space enhancement along the avenue, and some recognize the limitation of current policy and regulation. Many people identify the need for boosting economic vitality to support COVID recovery and rebuilding the vibrancy of downtown and the district. We also analyze the comments by concepts to capture specific feedback on what people like or dislike about each plan. From this exercise, we learn the strengths and weaknesses for each concept and how to address and reconcile them moving forward. So Linear Green is very appealing to a lot of people. The concept proposes a car-free urban linear park that prioritizes transit, people, and bike. People like the emphasis on green space, dedicated bus lanes, bike and pet safety, all that would encourage daily use of the avenue. However, their top concerns for Linear Green are traffic, maintenance, potential encampment, and limitation to hosting big events and First Amendment activities. Urban Capital proposes a downtown destination with extended sidewalk comfort amenities and services. People like the idea of a truly multimodal street and moving the center bike lane to one side of the avenue. People also welcome retail kiosks to enliven the street and generate economic activity. However, we also heard that Urban Capital may be too close to what we have today and may not be bold enough for Pennsylvania Avenue. Civic Stage proposes a large promenade that reinforces the Capitol Vista, providing flexible space for daily activities and special events. This concept was attractive to many people because it reminds them of European cities. Civic Stage also maintains some travel in while making the center median flexible for events. Some residents of the avenue point out potential issue regarding even noise and trash, and some caution that having too much pavement may limit daily use. Ultimately, the final design will likely be a combination of the three conceptual ideas, highlighting the best attribute of each plan. In general, people understood that the avenue is not living up to its potential. It could offer so much more to resident, worker, and tourist and make a lasting impression on those who make once-in-a-lifetime trip to DC. There is no better time than now to leverage and amplify the symbolic location, iconic vista, grand scale, and public spaces to promote civic pride and national identity right here on Pennsylvania Avenue. This concludes public comment summary. The full package of comments are posted on the website. All inputs and feedback will inform the next phase of concept development moving forward. I will now turn it over to Director Elizabeth Miller to provide project updates.
Thank you, Jeff. Our conversations and input from the public, stakeholders, and the district partners has been informative and insightful. While there will be many interest-to-balance and issues to work out, most all recognize the opportunities the avenue presents, the need to improve it, and are very receptive and enthusiastic about a new vision, particularly as we work to recover from the impacts of the pandemic. Building on the momentum, we are making significant progress to advance the initiative. Collaboration among federal and district partners and stakeholders has strengthened. Federal agencies and the district through the Deputy Mayor's Office are not only coordinating internally to our own organizations, but amongst each other to do the collective work that we're going to need to do to realize the new vision. On behalf of the partnership, I'd like to acknowledge and thank the General Services Administration for funding a utility survey, which is fundamental to our work moving forward. You'll see surveyors out on the avenue soon. Our initial kickoff meeting is next week. I'm also happy to relay that GSA and NCPC have secured the funding to prepare a new Pennsylvania Avenue plan. In a minute, I'll summarize the components of this plan, our next steps, and our anticipated timeline for not only developing the public space plan, but the implementation program recommendations. Currently, we are preparing the agreements and the work plan that will ensure that all the partners are singing from the same song sheet as we gear up for procurement of consultant services. Our partners are also beginning to think about demonstration projects as a way to highlight the avenue's potential as a venue in the near term and make it a better place for people. The new Pennsylvania Avenue plan will replace the decades-old 1974 PADC plan. It will consist of two primary components. First, a public space plan that will address right-of-way public spaces and infrastructure improvements that will be needed to transform the avenue as a place designed for people to enjoy every day, also a place for people to assemble and advocate for their beliefs, and a spectacular venue to celebrate the best of American art, entertainment, and culture. Second, the Pennsylvania Avenue plan will include an implementation program with governing recommendations that will address administration, operations, and maintenance, all important for the avenue's use, upkeep, and enjoyment and long-term success. Since 1996, when Congress dissolved the Pennsylvania Avenue Development Corporation, the avenue has had a complex jurisdictional structure shared among three federal agencies and the district government, each with our own unique roles. For more than 25 years, while each agency did their best to fulfill their responsibilities, there was no single entity in charge, and there was not an established body to adequately coordinate and make decisions on behalf of the avenue's greater good. The avenue needs a single steward to advocate for its future and sustained contribution to the district and the nation. There are many options that we can explore. Some of those might be a governing body that could be a single entity, perhaps a federal or district agency, or a partnership amongst some combination of district and federal agencies, perhaps a simplified version of the PADC. The initiative partners will begin discussing implementation and how to untangle the jurisdictional issues early on to address the stewardship and governance issue that are so important to this work. So this diagram illustrates the primary phases of work and our anticipated timeline. As I mentioned, the survey and the required administrative work, which is highlighted here in yellow, is all underway so that we can procure consultant services in 2023. At that point, we will come back to the commission for an information briefing to announce the selected team and provide an update on the project. As shown in blue, when our consultants are on board, our allocated funding that I mentioned earlier will be enough to prepare the new Pennsylvania Avenue plan for commission approval, including the public space plan and the implementation program recommendations. We will use the vision and the three conceptual ideas that Jeff spoke about a little earlier to further develop the concept alternatives that we will then use to initiate NEPA and 106 consultation. We anticipate initiating NEPA and 106 within about a year of contract award. With the consultants on board, we will continue to design, continue design development to prepare a schematic design for the commission's final approval. And we anticipate this will be in early 2026, and sooner if we can make it happen. The schematic plan will include the alignment, configuration, size, and general materials of the right-of-way and public spaces and their relationship to adjoining buildings and uses. The commission's final action will be approval to transmit the public space plan to GSA for acceptance. GSA will then transmit the plan to several congressional committees for concurrence. As shown here in lavender, between preliminary and final review, we will need to begin to identify any necessary legislative changes that may be required to help implement the implementation program. This will actually conclude this initial phase of work. Then, the ultimate governing body, entity, or governing partnership will be responsible for funding and completing the design development, construction drawings, and implementation. And of course, we will all work together to achieve that. While we are advancing planning and concept development, the partners agree that it's important to begin demonstrating the avenue's potential as a venue and a better place for people. Events DC, the Downtown DC Bid, and others are starting to consider near-term programming opportunities to stimulate the economy and highlight the avenue's potential. These demonstration projects will also help to inform the infrastructure, public space, and permitting improvements that we may need to successfully achieve our vision. Pennsylvania Avenue's location, land uses, and role in the district as the nation's capital makes it one of the most prominent places where the federal and district governments share many interests. We have come a long way since our initial studies, and the planets have aligned. Pennsylvania Avenue can become that new gravitational force to fulfill and advance the shared district and federal interest. Federal and district agencies agree that a new public space and implementation plan are important to ensure the avenue is a civic symbol and a beacon for the nation's capital, a place where we all can come together, engage, inspire, express, and celebrate our ideals. It will also be a place that will elevate and spotlight the district on both the national and international stage and contribute to its economic health and a place where all district residents and Americans can be proud of. Madam Chair, this concludes our briefing today, and we're happy to take any of your questions.
Well, thank you so much. Very inspiring presentation, and I just love the images. It's really exciting work. Do commissioners have any questions?
I actually have a question.
Commissioner Cash?
Yeah, so I'm just curious with regard to the public comment, if there were comments surrounding inaugural activities and how these different concepts might impact. I mean, it's once every four years, but it's kind of one of the big highlights for the Pennsylvania Avenue.
Yes, I can take that. We got a lot of comments about the accommodating inauguration activities, and we indicated to the public that regardless of any concept that we land on, it will be able to accommodate inauguration moving forward.
Great, that's helpful.
Any other questions for the team? If there are no questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Oh, sure. I'm sorry, Commissioner Wright.
I was trying to raise the hand thing. So can you say more about the comments? Or maybe this isn't the forum. Can you say a little bit more about the comments about Civic Stage being too similar to current conditions? I think that's kind of an interesting thing.
Actually, the people point out that Urban Capital is too similar to the current condition.
Okay, okay. And did they, can you elaborate on that a little bit?
When I was at the booth on the avenue, some people point out that, you know, just building a bike lane or doing a complete street on Pennsylvania Avenue may not be enough for its symbol because it can be, you know, it can be a 14th Street or M Street, right? This is Pennsylvania Avenue, and the avenue deserves something bigger and bolder.
Oh, cool. Big and bold. All right, good. That's good to hear.
Any other questions? Okay, well, why don't we then turn to discussion? And I'd ask the commissioners to turn on their cameras. We're going to start with Commissioner Cozart and then go in a round robin format using our normal seating orders. So Commissioner Cozart?
Sure. So just thank you, Jeff, and for the presentation. The district's been really happy, our planning office and our deputy mayor for planning economic development, to be able to collaborate extensively about this, both thinking about it from kind of the design perspective, but also from the kind of governance and stewardship and kind of civic infrastructure you need to build for this. And so really glad for the partnership, really grateful that we're seeing some resources come about to be able to make that real and looking forward to that continued partnership. So just really want to thank you all for this great work. I am happy to see that there are ways that it's bringing together both kind of the interests as a national stage plus a local stage. I think that's really coming across, and I imagine through bringing together the three different approaches or the best thinking from the three different approaches and integrating it that we'll be able to maintain that. My hope is that we'll be able to kind of maintain that duality so that it's not actually competing with each other. So just really appreciate that and stand at the ready to continue to support.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon?
Thanks. Not a whole lot. Appreciate the presentation from the board and the hard work they've done to especially gather community input to their three options. It's obviously a long, major program we've undertaken, and so I just look for the opportunity to see the work continue to develop to help improve Pennsylvania Avenue and its role in the community in the DC area. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner May?
Yeah, I'm glad to get a recap of the comments. I think that was helpful just to get a check-in on what we heard from the public. I'm, you know, a lot of it made sense to me, and it's the sort of thing that in some ways we were expecting. I do want to say that it's not surprising that the skating community is concerned about the potential loss of the de facto skate is concerned about potential loss of the de facto skate park at Freedom Plaza. But I'm not convinced that Pennsylvania Avenue is the right place for a future skate park. And I think that is a local recreational concern that probably should be addressed somewhere else. And it's unfortunate, frankly, that the park has become that, but it does seem somewhat inevitable based on the design and the difficulty in policing that activity. It should be, it should happen somewhere in the city, certainly because there's the demand for it, but I don't think this is the right place. All that being said, I'll just repeat some of the comments that I made back in February, which is that I am very, very excited that this is moving forward. Although I was surprised when I look back and it's like that was back in February. So it's been nine months since our last check-in on this, and I want to get going now. And just, you know, it can happen soon enough from my perspective. And I will close by saying this, you know, what I said last time, which is I think this is the most important thing that NCPC has done and will do in my time on the commission. And so let's get going.
Thanks, Commissioner May. Commissioner Argo.
I don't, I'll just align myself particularly with Commissioner May's concepts, comments, sorry. And, and, and I'm very interested in this, as you know, all those of us that have that have lived in the city for, I was adding it up the other day. I'm not going to tell you because it gives you an idea how old I am. And, but it's been, you know, it's been a very long time and having, you know, and you develop, you develop, at least I have, not just a love for our city and an appreciation, but an interest in sharing it in the best possible way with everybody who doesn't have the, have the fortune that we have to be living here. So carry on. This is exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright.
Well, I'm not shy about admitting how old I am. And, and I.
I wouldn't say I was shy.
And I am particularly heartened by the public's understanding of how important the government's issue is. Because by my calculation, we've been at this for seven years. If it comes, if we're actually at CDs in 27, I think you said. God, I may be hanging on by then, but I doubt it. And a whole lot of people will have retired who were on the ground floor of this effort. And so the continuity has been something that I've been arguing for all along because I think the lack of a clear understanding of who's in charge. Everybody's had a piece of this thing for decades, and that's why it has fallen into disrepair. Because we each own a little bit of it. I mean, maybe not literally, but figuratively. And so I think that piece of it is so important and that the public understands it and doesn't dismiss it as just some bureaucratic mumbo jumbo is really important. So, I mean, aside from all the other stuff. I mean, we've been talking about this for a long time, so I don't feel like I need to add, but I did want to acknowledge that. I think that's super important.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon.
Oh, yeah, I'm excited by this all like everyone else, and I associate with all previous remarks. And it's good to see this again, having served on the Pennsylvania Avenue Development Corporation a lot of years ago. It's kind of, they kind of interested to be involved in this state. Thank you. Looking forward to it.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash.
Thanks so much. I just want to reiterate what I said a few months ago in addition to this. I think this work, ongoing work's been great. I think that the concept is really, really cool, and I'm excited to move this forward. I think this is a once-in-a-generation project that we're looking at. I will just reiterate and be a little bit parochial and say that here at the Wilson Building, it is the state capital essentially of the district. And I think that just making sure that all of the use, I mean, this is the most parochial thing. I have a car, but there are all the parking for the highest up in the city government is right here because we don't have an underground garage. So, once we get to the execution, I think that there's just some of those little details that we need to work out. And I think that a big part of that is the governance piece, which being a legislative nerd, that's kind of one of the most exciting to me is making sure that we have coherent governance and not this mishmash of who owns the sidewalk, who owns the street and all that. And also just throw out there, I think I mentioned this the last time we spoke, but just as part of the governance issue, but even small issues like where our bus is going to be rerouted and some of those things, because even though it's a completely underutilized corridor, it is still utilized by a few things. So I think that just gets back to the governance and looking at the execution and making sure that we're getting this right. But overall, I think this is really exciting and we'll be excited to have this new national and local resource right out in front of my building here. So thanks for the presentation.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
Thanks for the presentation. I don't have any additional comments.
And Commissioner Davenport.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. No comments or questions?
Thank you. Well, I would like to add that it's wonderful to see the level of public engagement from the outreach activities and to hear about the real excitement in the public's thoughts and ideas on this new vision for the avenue. And I'm really pleased by the number of comments and the input that we received. I mean, it clearly reflects how important the avenue is to our stakeholders and to the public. And I'm sure they are just as eager as we are to see some of these things move forward. And I also want to thank GSA for helping us to secure the funding, which is giving our federal and district partner agencies an amazing opportunity to create these wonderful public spaces for the most important and iconic place in our capital. So as I believe Deputy Mayor Falcicchio, Falcicchio, excuse me if I'm mispronouncing his name, but I know he relayed during our February meeting, reimagining Pennsylvania Avenue is critical to attracting people back to downtown DC and sparking economic development opportunities. So there's so many reasons for us to be doing this work. And as we address the impacts of COVID and investing in high-quality public space is also essential to enhance the federal presence and the experience for visitors, workers, and residents. And I do want to recall Commissioner Wright's comment from February. This is really an important moment, and there's no better place to bring people back together for communal joy. I think that was your term, and it really is something that we need more of. So I just wanted to take this moment to celebrate, and I really appreciate the staff staying with this because these are long processes, they're complicated. The comments about governance, I think, are spot on, and hopefully this, as Beth put it, the stars have aligned. So having this moving forward is a great moment. So we look forward to hearing updates as we continue on the concept and design. And just, you know, once again, thank you to the team for the robust civic engagement. I think it's a really important step. So thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too. So with that, I think we're ready to go back to Agenda Item 5A. It's an information presentation on the Monumental Core Stormwater Flood Risk Management. And Ms. Costa is going to be leading the presentation, so I'm glad our technical issues got resolved and Ms. Costa is back with us.
Well, thank you very much. I think that, oh, that's everybody's worst nightmare, right? Things going a little south. Can I just double check to make sure that my co-presenters, Ms. Feldman and Ms. Bernard are on? You can just use your mics.
I don't know if I'm on. This is Judy.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you.
And this is Nick.
Good afternoon, Chair White and Commissioners. Today, you will hear about flooding in the federal triangle, followed by a presentation from Judy Scott Feldman with the National Mall Coalition on a proposal from that group to build an underground facility on the mall to address this issue. Then DC Silver Jackets co-chair Nick Bernard will discuss more recent studies to look at system-wide options for flood risk management and cost and damages assessments. I'll close with remarks regarding NCPC's review of the coalition proposal. There are three types of flooding that pose risks for Washington DC. River flooding along the Potomac and Anacostia Rivers occurs from snow melt and rain events. Washington has experienced several major floods that impacted the Monumental Core. In response, a levee system protects sections of downtown Washington. The levee on the National Mall protects against river floods, but not against stormwater or interior floods. The second type of flooding is coastal flooding or storm surge flooding. The Potomac and Anacostia Rivers are both tidal. Flooding of this type occurs when there's a tropical storm or hurricane that pushes water up the Potomac River towards the city. Today's presentation focuses on interior or stormwater flooding in the federal triangle. This results from strong localized storms over the topographic bowl. Stormwater moves rapidly across this urbanized area to the lowest point, the federal triangle. Interior floods are often localized and happen rapidly with little advance warning. The volume of water is significant, and multi-day storms can cause multiple back-to-back floodish episodes. Interior flooding can happen when there's no river flooding occurring. And the stormwater infrastructure system in the federal triangle area was built for 15 to 25-year storms. The storm that really got our attention occurred in June 2006, and it generated a huge volume of water in the federal triangle area and was characterized as a 200-year, six-hour storm event. It occurred with very little advanced notice. Impacts included damages to buildings, equipment and materials, threats to nationally significant art and cultural assets, operational disruptions at federal buildings, short-term disruptions to the streets and metro system, and threats to workers and visitors in the area. There were multiple pathways for flooding. Generators and other equipment were flooded, so available pumps stopped. Water came in through sub-level windows, driveways, staircases, and vent shafts. So the major storm in 2006 caused significant damage. There have been smaller, but still significant storms that have occurred since then that have resulted in shutdowns of Constitution Avenue, power and transportation disruptions, and flooding, though less significant, of buildings in the area. Following the 2006 federal triangle flood event, DC Water, GSA, and others funded the federal triangle stormwater study, which was released in 2011, prepared by Greeley and Hanson, an engineering consulting firm with extensive experience working with the district stormwater system. This study evaluated the 2006 storm and considered several options for managing flood risk. Two system-wide options were identified as effective in addressing the significant volumes of water that occur on really short notice. One was a pumping station on or near the mall with infrastructure to collect water and pump it towards the Potomac River. The other was flood storage under the National Mall with a pump. Note that this requires a very large area. Another option was for facilities to develop flood management measures individually. Finding a solution to stormwater flooding in this area is very challenging. The viable system-wide options have substantial estimated price tags. The pump station option was estimated at $360 million in $2,006, which today is around $490 million. Other solutions have similar price tags. While flood risks affect federal triangle stakeholders such as GSA Archives and the Smithsonian, system-wide solutions affect other locations and other agencies, including the National Park Service. The National Mall and the federal triangle are important destinations with cultural and historic assets, operational considerations, and regional infrastructure. They are complex and highly regulated locations. Following the 2001 study, several facilities in the area pursued individual floodproofing options, while other system-wide solutions continued to be explored. Archives and Commerce installed permanent solutions. Various facilities planned emergency responses and moved vulnerable infrastructure and certain operations and assets to higher elevations. Agencies incorporated flood considerations into their rehab and new construction proposals. During this time, the DC Silver Jackets was formed to address flood issues in the district and provide an important facilitation role. It is led by the Army Corps of Engineers and the District of Columbia, and NCPC is an active partner. Local and national climate studies have continued to indicate that storms are likely to happen more frequently and be more intense in this area. With that, I'd like to transition to a presentation by Judy Scott Feldman, so I'm going to stop sharing and let her take over from here to talk about the National Mall Coalition's proposal.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Chair White and Commissioners. I'm Judy Scott Feldman, Chair of the National Mall Coalition, a nonprofit organization dedicated to thoughtful management of the National Mall, the stage for American democracy. The Coalition appreciates the opportunity to brief you today on our National Mall Underground project. We took away from NCPC's November 18, 2021, letter to Congress about the underground two main points. First, NCPC's preferred solution to flooding on the mall and in the federal triangle is a pumping station at 14th Street. This solution is also supported by the National Park Service, the Smithsonian, and other members of the Intergovernmental Silver Jackets Flood Study Group. Second, your letter says there are too many problems with the underground, including contaminated stormwater, security screening, disruption of the mall grass and vistas, and cost. To begin, you should know that NCPC's objections to the underground are not shared by all. The Army Corps of Engineers 2018 study concluded that the underground could alleviate the flooding problem. The Washington Post wrote a favorable editorial. The US Commission of Fine Arts told Congress that the underground deserved further study. And USDA Secretary Tom Vilcek commended the coalition and stated his preference for alternative A with no parking. Other modifications may emerge out of a thorough public consultation, such as NCPC is now conducting on the future of Pennsylvania Avenue. Stormwater flooding poses an existential threat to the mall, to the Smithsonian museums, and to the entire federal triangle area. The threat is well documented. Hurricane Ian just last month was another wake-up call. Government agencies have not identified a comprehensive solution. The National Mall Underground is the only proposal, to our knowledge, that has been designed specifically to deal with stormwater flooding in the mall area in a comprehensive way. The Army Corps study of the underground confirmed that flood risk from a storm of the intensity that flooded the federal triangle area in 2006 could be reduced significantly during a flood event by implementation of the underground. We have not seen any comparable objective analysis affirming that the pumping station would solve the flood problem. The idea of floodwater storage beneath the mall was first proposed in the 2011 federal triangle stormwater study. And as the Silver Jackets Group concluded in their 2020 report, it remains their second choice with no parking included. The Coalition's idea in 2013 was to take the underground reservoir that would be expensive to build and sit unused most of the time and turn it into an active visitor-friendly facility that will generate revenue year-round. The concept has been developed by architect Arthur Cotton Moore, an esteemed member for many years of the National Mall Coalition's Board of Directors. Sadly, Arthur died on September 4. Still convinced the underground represented a visionary, long-term solution to climate change, flooding, and clean energy needs. The underground reservoir can be constructed beneath the mall's grassy panels between the Smithsonian Castle and the Natural History Museum and between the 9th and 12th Street tunnels. The lower floodable level is sized to hold 28 to 30 million gallons of floodwater. When not needed to collect stormwater, the lower level will serve as a parking garage for tour buses. The upper level, not to be flooded, originally included car and bus parking, plus restrooms and food service for arising, arriving visitors, and rest facilities for bus drivers. Alternative A, developed in response to criticism of car parking, removes the cars and adds more bus parking. At each end are small cisterns to collect rainwater and groundwater to be used for irrigation of grass, trees, and gardens. Geothermal wells beneath the structure, added to the concept in two thousand and fourteen at the suggestion of then-GSA Administrator Dan Tangerlini, will provide clean energy to Smithsonian museums and GSA-managed buildings around the mall. Significantly, the underground's multipurpose approach greatly reduces costs. A two thousand and nineteen preliminary financing plan by experienced consultants Ram Island Strategies and Bostonia Bank found that the cost of the underground, approximately three hundred million, could be offset by stormwater credits, clean energy credits, sale of irrigation water, and parking revenue, resulting in minimal cost to the taxpayer. The Army Corps agreed that revenue potential from parking fees and water credits may offer self-financing opportunities that attracts a public-private partnership. Now let's turn to the letters to Congress. The Park Service letter from March of this year informs Congress that NPS is opposed to parking and that nothing, not the flood reservoir component, not the clean energy, will change that. In other words, without any data or analysis, the Park Service rejects the underground outright. The NPS has made its position clear to other government bodies, both federal and in DC government. Several DC agencies showed strong interest in the underground in the beginning, but then were discouraged from supporting it, saying NPS was opposed. NCPC's letter cast doubt that the parking, the bus parking is doable, or that bus drivers would use it. But the Coalition met twice with the American Bus Association, and we heard enthusiastic comments about access to bus parking near the museums and about the bus driver rest facilities, comments reiterated in their letter of support. Moreover, the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments doesn't share NCPC skepticism. CAG conducted a region-wide tour bus parking study in two thousand and fifteen and concluded that the proposed National Mall Underground would be the most dramatic improvement in bus parking capacity if constructed. The most egregious misrepresentation comes from the Park Services letter, which states that the Corps of Engineers concluded that it was not clear if the project was feasible. This distorts the main conclusion of the Corps' report, that flood risk to the National Mall, and I quote, "could be reduced significantly during a flood event by the implementation of the underground." The Corps did raise concerns, including questions of how to safely evacuate people in the event of flash flooding. In their letters, NCPC, NPS, and GSA share this concern. Responding to the Corps' red flag, concept architect Arthur Cotton Moore immediately revised the design to include a series of floodgates to permit, to permit a gradual staged intake of floodwater, thus allowing a predictable and orderly evacuation. And then there's the staggering omission in all the letters. Why is it that while NCPC and NPS are prolific in criticizing the underground's varied components, they never discuss the field of geothermal wells? Here we have a sustainable, clean energy source able to provide three thousand tons of cooling per hour, enough energy to power not only one, but several Smithsonian museums and other public buildings. And nothing positive to say? This component should take on new residence in light of the Inflation Reduction Act of two thousand and twenty-two. The NCPC letter even fails to address the Army Corps' finding that the underground is one solution to flooding. Which brings us to the pumping station, the solution preferred by NCPC and others. The workability of the pump station is unproven. NCPC's letter correctly warns that stormwater runoff from city streets is contaminated. But where will a pumping station send that contaminated water? Into the tidal basin or Potomac River? Did EPA agree to that idea, further polluting the Potomac River? And what if, as is likely, heavy rains cause street flooding as well as tidal basin and Potomac River flooding? Do we add to the already severe flooding in Alexandria and other downriver communities? Please explain how in the likely worst-case scenario, the pumping station would prove to be, in NCPC's words, "the most effective and implementable solution." We're fortunate there hasn't been a recurrence of the two thousand and six flood. But does anyone doubt that it will rain and flood again? What action will this commission take to address in a comprehensive way the existential flood threat, as well as other intractable problems threatening the future sustainability of our National Mall? It is irrational to continue to depend on agency-by-agency plans and expect comprehensive solutions to emerge. It's profoundly inequitable to tell American Latinos and women their history doesn't belong on the mall. It's unfair to criticize the Smithsonian for seeking their new museum sites on the mall. It's shortsighted to move ahead with the Park Services' proposed seawall repairs near the Lincoln Memorial if that action is not one element of a comprehensive flood plan to assure that the seawall repairs don't make interior and tidal flooding even worse. Chair White, the National Mall Coalition urges NCPC to tell Congress two things that can be accomplished under your leadership. First, tell Congress that this commission will undertake, undertake a full and open consultation process to properly vet the National Mall Underground in a dispassionate and objective manner. The multipurpose underground requires stepping outside the agency-based planning mentality. It asks, what are the benefits to the American public and to the mall as a whole? For flood mitigation, yes, but also for clean energy, visitor access to our museums, sustainability, and affordability. The concept has been modified over time in response to public and government comments, and no doubt will continue to improve through the consultation process. If NCPC thinks they cannot lead that review, then tell Congress why not, so Congress can take appropriate action. Second, tell Congress that NCPC recognizes that the mall cannot be a completed work of art any more than American history is finished. The historic seventeen ninety-one and nineteen oh two plans for the mall were concerned with creating a capital city and locating public buildings and monuments. But today, our urgent needs include much more: flooding, climate change, clean energy, infrastructure upgrades, future museum sites, tourism. These require us to think in new ways about the mall, about its purpose as a unified landscape symbol of America, about its capacity to grow its physical boundaries to continue to tell the American story. Each mall agency doing its own plans cannot and will not solve the need to address these questions and create a new comprehensive, long-range plan for the future. Tell Congress it's time to create a new McMillan-type commission composed of the best minds in architecture, landscape architecture, engineering, and sustainability. The task: to create an updated, comprehensive, and bipartisan plan for a sustainable National Mall, the stage for American democracy in its third century. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Judy. If you could please stop sharing, we'll proceed with the rest of the presentation. And. All right, Nick, can you see the screen?
Yes, I can see the screen. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
All right, thank you, Julia, and good afternoon, Chair White and other commission members. I'm Nick Bernard. I work at the District Department of Energy and Environment, where I'm the chief of the floodplains, wetlands, and groundwater branch. I'm also an NCPC alumnus, so it's fun to be back at a meeting, even, even virtual. One of my jobs at DOE is to be the co-lead for the DC Silver Jackets along with Stacy Underwood of the Army Corps of Engineers, and I'm presenting to you today in that capacity as the co-lead of the DC Silver Jackets. So the Silver Jackets is an inter-agency group that meets quarterly, and we bring together federal district and other regional partners to share work that is happening in the district specific to floodplain management. The meetings are a chance for everyone to hear about projects that might be happening in their area, regulation changes, or new mapping that can be used by agencies. In addition to these quarterly meetings, we also take on special projects at the request of members, and one of those projects we took on in the past few years was further study and evaluation of flooding solutions in the Federal Triangle. With guidance from federal, federal and district agency leaders, the Silver Jackets applied for and were awarded grant funding to conduct two activities for this, and I'll talk about both today. So the first was a series of workshops to evaluate various system-wide proposals, and the second was a damage and cost assessment of Federal Triangle flooding. Next slide, please. So for the first activity I mentioned, we had two workshops and one charrette. And the two workshops were held in two thousand and eighteen. The first was in June, and that was just to get everyone on the same page and share a common understanding of what the problem was in Federal Triangle, as well as what limitations we kind of knew about in advance that different agencies had with their facilities and their grounds. The second workshop we had was to gather as many ideas as possible and have them presented to this group, just so everyone could see this wide array of possibilities for how we could tackle the problem of flooding in Federal Triangle. Overall, we heard from and talked about thirteen different concepts in these workshops, including international examples like Bichon Park in Singapore, which you can see a picture of on the bottom right, and the possibility of installing green infrastructure upstream of Federal Triangle to capture water before it gets there. The Coalition for the National Mall also presented their proposal at this meeting. Next slide, please. So following those two workshops, the Silver Jackets team narrowed down the concepts that we thought were most feasible to just five, and then we presented the remaining five in a charrette in February of two thousand and twenty. And so those remaining concepts included two variations of underground storage, so one of which was the National Mall Coalition's proposal, and there was another underground storage option, which was standalone, without any parking or other uses. There were also two variations of pumping stations. There was one where the pumping stations could be located either on Fifteenth and Constitution or Fifteenth and Independence. It was kind of one. It was one alternative, but kind of two, two ways to, to have the pumping station. And then a second variation was to repurpose the tidal basin north of the Cuts Bridge and adding a pumping station there as well. And then lastly, there was a proposal to daylight Tiger Creek formerly that ran, that used to run along Constitution Avenue and use open-air conveyance and storage with green infrastructure, including a retention basin on the northern portion of the Washington Monument grounds. So those were the five that, that we focused on for this workshop, or charrette, rather. So in the charrette, we brought together federal and district agencies with engineering, historic preservation, security, and land use expertise, and together they provided a high-level review of these options and discussed the pros and cons of each proposal. So the goal of the charrette was not to come up with one solution to rule the mall and put forward for construction. It was intended to provide guidance to agency leadership to shape any future studies, including potentially an EBA assessment. It offers a recommendation but doesn't preclude consideration of additional options and is not a final decision. All that said, the two thousand and eighteen workshops and the two thousand and twenty charrette represent a significant effort to conduct a thorough analysis of a wide range of options with all of the relevant stakeholders present. Next slide. So before I talk about the results, just one more word on process here. During the charrette, each of the five options were scored on a matrix like the one you see on the right. I'm not expecting you to read this, but I do want to be clear that each, each of those five options, we evaluated from an objective set of criteria, which included things like its ability to reduce flooding, its risk to public safety, its costs, and historic and cultural impacts. There were others as well, but just naming a few. So as far as results, all of the system-wide options had some concerns. Many of them related to safety or security or views and operations and maintenance. So they all had, had issues that would need to be overcome. Based on the charrette participants' review, the most effective option with the least disruptive impacts was the pump station on the National Mall that could handle significant flood volumes. And unlike the other underground storage options, it could handle multiple storm events that happened back-to-back. It would discharge the Potomac River, requiring upgrades and new tunnels. Next slide, please. So as mentioned, the Coalition's underground facility was considered, and since it was presented today, I'll just talk briefly about the charrette's findings for this proposal. So it is similar to another option for standalone underground storage facility, but the Coalition's inclusion of a parking garage and visitor center created impacts that made this much, made this a much less attractive option than a standalone storage option. So some concerns and impacts that agencies noted in this proposal are on the screen here, but I'll just highlight specifically the evacuation concerns in particular. The type of flooding that all of these solutions need to address is is not slow-moving storms with day's warning, like riverine or coastal flooding. You might get a couple of days in advance notice that the hurricane is on its way and you can do things to prepare. The type of flooding we're dealing with here is, is flash flooding. A typical scenario might be a summer thunderstorm. The Weather Service might issue a thunderstorm wash across the entire region for the entire day, but they don't know where or when the heaviest rain will be. There might only be fifteen minutes or even less, less warning that a severe thunderstorm is imminent, which means there's fifteen minutes or less to clear the facility of vehicles and people in order for this to properly function as in underground storage. As a result, there are significant life safety concerns that were documented in this charrette report as well, as well as other reports. Next slide, thanks. So, so that wraps up the, the kind of report out on the series of workshops that we had, but I'll just spend a minute talking about our latest effort. The Silver Jackets also prepared a high-level flood damage and impact assessment for the Federal Triangle area. This is not a formal cost-benefit analysis. The goal was to determine if the costs that might be associated with another two thousand and six-type rain event would justify the expense of a system-wide solution. And the way that we went about determining the costs is by reviewing all the damage and expense data from the two thousand and six event. So it's not publicly available yet, but will be soon, and I can give you a small preview today. And one takeaway is that the assessment was inconclusive. Next slide, please. So a little bit on why it was inconclusive. You know, the main reason is that the damage data was incomplete or inconclusive for a couple of factors. The first being not all facilities and operators were able to provide us with detailed cost and damage information. The second reason is that there are complexities in how you evaluate the impacts of vulnerable and historic, vulnerable historic and culturally significant resources. So it's typical analyses that we can perform as floodplain managers is, you know, if you have a typical office building, we know, you know, around how much damage will occur if there's a foot of water. It's less obvious if there are priceless artifacts or the original copy of the Constitution. How do you value that? And what, what are going to be the damages? A third factor is some impacts that were important in two thousand and six are actually reduced today. So that includes the fact that a number of individual facilities like the National Archives and Smithsonian Buildings have implemented flood risk management measures that actually reduce the flood risk at those facilities. And a second thing is that there were significant costs in two thousand and six related to employee relocation. There was cost to find new office space when buildings were uninhabitable. But if a flood were to occur today, everyone would be able to work from home thanks to all of the, the changes in telework policies and capabilities that we have post-COVID. So the damages, those specific damages aren't as relevant today. And then lastly, you know, all of the current studies that we have show that climate change will increase the probability of these severe rain events. So when you, when you put this all together, it's difficult to draw conclusions because the factors that I mentioned here both increase and decrease what we might expect damages to be relative to two thousand and six. Next slide. And so I'll just wrap up here, you know, given the inconclusive results, it's, it's, it's still not clear what would be most cost-effective. Is it flood-proofing individual buildings in federal triangle? Is it a system-wide infrastructure project? Is it taking no action or some combination of all of those? I'll close by saying that, given the information that we have right now, a system-wide solution would not be economically justified. However, we'd recommend doing a more comprehensive analysis, including a detailed economic analysis before any final decisions are made. Thank you. And with that, I'll turn it back to Julia.
Great. Thank you, Nick. We really appreciate the continued coordination between federal and district agencies to address flooding issues here in the district. To wrap up, I wanted to provide NCPC staff's review of the Coalition proposal. In 2021, Representatives Norton and Raskin asked several federal agencies to comment on the Coalition's proposal. NCPC staff's response was included in your materials. Our comments are aligned with responses from GSA, the Smithsonian, and the Park Service, and the findings from the Silver Jackets charrette. We continue to stand by these comments. While we appreciate the efforts of the Coalition to address flood risks in the Monumental Core and raise awareness about this issue, this is a project idea from an outside organization that advocates for one solution. Any proposal on the National Mall would require the consent of the Park Service, which has not occurred. The Coalition's proposal incorporates uses that raise significant concerns. There are system-wide solutions that are more effective and have fewer negative impacts than the Coalition's proposal, which was demonstrated in efforts like the charrette to look comparatively at different options. Just to recap those, there are site and operational disruptions. There are security concerns that are created by putting people and vehicles under the mall that would require screening and other measures, which in itself creates further impacts like vehicle queuing and transportation concerns. The Coalition paid the Army Corps of Engineers to study whether the proposal, their proposal, could accommodate stormwater similar to a 2006 flood. The Corps concluded that it could, but as noted, had concerns, including life safety, such as the evacuation issues Nick discussed. This was not an endorsement of the Coalition's proposal. Further stormwater contamination might occur from contact with spaces used by vehicles in the Coalition's proposal. The proposal would likely have a number of intrusions on the mall viewshed and landscape from vents, entrances and exits, and other features. The primary proposed uses are not desired in this location. Visitor centers are currently prohibited on the mall, and the Smithsonian is focused on visitor amenities as part of the castle restoration. Underground parking is not desired at this downtown location where other transportation modes are encouraged, and it is not clear that a facility that would require extensive security screening and fees would attract or fully meet tour bus needs. Again, the Coalition is focused on a single idea. The work of the Silver Jackets and the participating agencies has been to evaluate and compare both system-wide and individual solutions to look at flood risk, impacts, and cost. There are real significant stormwater flood risks for the federal triangle area, and solutions are complex and costly. And this is just one of several different flood risks that must be considered and addressed in the district. As Nick highlighted, the Silver Jackets work has illustrated the ongoing efforts by federal and district agencies to identify and compare different solutions to address flood risks for the federal triangle. Whoops. The Coalition's work has been presented and included in these comparative reviews. Several temporary and permanent individual measures have been implemented over time, and evolving factors influence the impact of flooding in the federal triangle. Our focus is on measures that reduce flood risk and do so in a way that recognizes and considers the potential impacts to the federal triangle and to the National Mall. We look forward to working with the Silver Jackets to bring the results of its recent work back for discussion with agency leaders. And as noted, additional study is needed to make informed decisions about how best to address the federal triangle's interior flooding concerns, including more detailed cost-benefit analysis to compare no-action, independent action, or system-wide approaches. And we also think that there's an opportunity to look at all of these options through an EVA analysis. This concludes the presentation, and along with the other presenters, I'm happy to answer any questions. I note that John Cassidy with Greeley and Hanson, who worked on the 2011 study and subsequent reviews, and Andy Lehman from the US Army Corps of Engineers, who worked on the damage and cost study, are also available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
May I?
Thank you, Ms. Costa. Thank you, Ms. Ben and Mr. Bernard. Did the commissioners have any questions? I don't see any questions being raised. I'd like to now open it up to the commission for discussion. If the commissioners would please turn on your cameras. I will start with Commissioner May and then go in round robin format using our normal seating order. If you would please keep your webcams on during the discussion. And with that, let's turn to Commissioner May.
Okay, thank you very much. This is hard. I'm just bewildered as to why we're here again talking about this idea. But I'll try to be more specific and provide more context for our letter, which this Feldman did reference, but didn't. It's that we tried to make. I do want to say first that I appreciate Ms. Costa's presentation that gives a broader context for flooding and what has occurred last fifteen or so years that this has been a hot topic, I guess, since 2006, and that's and I also getting the Mr. Bernard's presentation with the recap of what Silver Jacket thinking about and working on. I've seen Feldman's presentation before each time I see it, there are new little additions to it, trying to address these concerns, but the major concerns that we have with it are not are not resolved by any of those. So I will I will do a quick recap, hopefully a quick recap of what we wrote in response to the request for a review of the concept that came from Representative Norton, Representative Raskin. First of all, we have been talking about the concept of for, I mean, this was looked at by the National Park Service in 1960. And even today, this idea, 1960s idea, I mean, giant parking lot, underground visitor centers. I mean, we don't have centers anymore to any great extent, and certainly don't do one, would not do one in Washington. We tried and it didn't work. And we're not interested in doing visitor centers again on the mall. We looked at it fully in 2010 for the National Mall. And we had previously rejected the concept of parking when it came to us, you know, outside those planning efforts in 2005. The fact that certain bells and whistles have been added to it don't really change the essential nature of this. It's a parking garage, adding stormwater retention, that some some benefit. And geothermal wells that has some as well. Having water for irrigation, again, that has some benefit. We are doing many of those things already, retaining stormwater that falls on the mall in in cisterns, and it's used for irrigation of the mall. And anybody who remembers what the mall was like fifteen years ago knows that today it is substantially improved because of those features. We have done that, and you know, we would do more of that if the opportunity presented itself and it made sense, makes sense. We also geothermal, and we've done it for multiple projects on the mall, including the small food kiosks and the most recently completed, I guess it's not that recent anymore, but the completed not that long ago, screenings facility, Washington Monument. That's all heated and using geothermal. So we believe in things like that, and those are important aspects to any kind of development that would happen in Washington. Where the downtown flooding issue, again, this, the idea of doing cisterns is not the most effective, according to the study that was done in 2006. That was reiterated in the work of the Silver Jackets over the years. But if there were a good, you know, if we were to consider simply retained retention in a cistern, that kind of system versus a pump station, maybe some deeper investigation of those alternatives. And but in no scenario, and I was there for the the charrette in 2019, when this was 2020, I got twenty when it was discussed. There was no one in the room who supported, including parking with a cistern water storage, just alternative. The the mall landscape is something that doesn't seem to get much mention here. I know it is, you know, it was a concern that was mentioned by Ms. Costa in NCPC's columns. But the it's one thing to have a cistern under the mall, and we have cisterns under a portion of the mall right now, and that's not very apparent. You'd have to know what you're looking for to see any kind of access ports and things like that. That would not be true for a parking garage, parking garage, even if you enter and exit off of the tunnels, which in itself is a questionable prospect. You still have multiple exit facilities, ventilation structures, and things like that that would do damage to the mall and that historic landscape. And in, you know, the construction of such a large structure and, you know, some of the things that would be necessary to build that could do significant long-term damage to the elm panels that flank the mall because of deep watering and other impacts, much more so than anything else that we would undertake. The whole idea of putting parking there undermines all of the current thinking and trends when it comes to transportation. The idea of having, you know, the opportunity to park a whole lot of single occupancy, or sorry, single vehicles or even buses in that location drives more vehicle traffic, drives more more congestion. And, you know, even though you might, you know, one might try to paint this as a more eco-friendly solution because there are geothermal wells. I mean, there are going to be a whole lot of cars and buses lining up to get into this thing if it if it is built. Maybe, of course, maybe it won't be that popular because it'd be so hard to get into. I don't know. Then it becomes a white elephant and wind up with a giant structure under the mall for no good reason. The in any case, we have, we looked at this issue very carefully in 2010 for the mall master plan and determined that additional parking beyond the 1600 surface parking spaces on and near the mall in West Potomac, East and West Potomac Parks is sufficient for the demand. And that, you know, we really do want to encourage people to come via metro or metro bus or bike share, ride share. We have six capital bike share stations. We have the circulator bus that's funded actually by parking revenues on the mall or subsidized by it. I mean, those, that's the way people should be getting to the mall, not by building a parking garage so that everyone can drive. I won't go into great detail on the tour bus practicality. I have heard from the, I mean, I've looked at the tour bus parking issue in this job and in previous jobs. And one of the things that seems to get left out of the conversation every time is the fact that these tour buses bring people from site to site. They don't just park on the mall and then let everybody out, and then they go do the entire mall on foot. That's not the way it happens. They get bussed off, dropped off at one location, get picked up at another. Sometimes the buses even wait for them right there. It is the way people get around on the mall, and it's, all things considered, not an awful way to do that. Having convenient bus parking nearby may not be a bad idea for those, that number who do want to drop off, but this is not the place to do it. Under the mall is not the place to do it. The visitor center itself, I mentioned before, we don't do visitor centers anymore. There is a law that says that we cannot do a visitor center on the mall. And the this the idea of doing something like this, I mean, we want people to experience the places. We don't want them to experience the visitor center. And so it doesn't really serve a purpose. It's outmoded thinking when it comes to how visitors use and experience the mall, especially in the modern day when people have access to all the information that they need on their telephone. Their phones. Security was mentioned as well. Security would be a big concern, given that there are a number of times throughout the year when there are large numbers of people on the mall, not just July 4th or inaugurations. It would be very risky to have a a structure like this beneath those large numbers of people without some sort of security screening. And if we introduce a security screening, we introduce long lines, especially if we're talking about screening buses. That is a real challenge, and I would point out Smithsonian, you know, closed off some of the parking garages that existed underneath their museums for security reasons. It doesn't make any sense from a security perspective. I think the last thing that I would want to say is that this is, this is national parkland, and there is not an existing authority that we have to be able to permit, authorize in any way, something like what Ms. Feldman has proposed. The, so if this were to happen, it would require an act of Congress, and I have not detected any interest on the part of the Congress to authorize something like this. And should it actually be, should there actually be any kind of legislation? I fully expect that the National Park Service and the Department of Interior to oppose it for many of the reasons that I've already described. So that's it for my comments, Ms. Feldman. I see you raising your hand. I am not interested in having a discussion. This is not the forum for me to have a discussion with you about this. I am telling you what I think.
I totally
Thank you, Commissioner May.
That we will not have to discuss this again. Thank you.
Sorry, I was on mute. Thank you, Commissioner May and Ms. Feldman. This is really more of a discussion for commissioners. So I'd like to keep going and hear from Commissioner Argo.
I oh I will I don't have much additional to say. I, I'm I respect and align myself with the comments made by my fellow commissioner. Mr. May, who, you know, who has been engaged with this issue certainly much longer than I have. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. Commissioner Wright?
Oh, boy. Well, I have to say, I, I I think the whole tone of this debate is really unfortunate and and seems quite personal and loaded with all kinds of inferences that are that are inappropriate. First and foremost, I have to take issue again with Ms. Feldman's claim that With Ms. Feldman's claim that, that nobody's looking at this problem comprehensively. I've been on the record before refuting that, and I think the, the Silver Jacket presentation speaks for itself. To suggest that because the findings of several federal agencies individually and together. Are insufficient and a dispassionate review is needed. It, again, by inference, we, we must conclude that, that what has been done is being characterized. As something less than a responsible and. Objective look at the proposal and I would, I would simply say that because. The findings don't align with, with the, with the. With. The contents of the proposal that doesn't, that doesn't make it. But it doesn't make it dismissible as, as a lack of having done a thorough review and, and exercise due diligence. Moreover, I think it's, I can't help but feel like some of the supporting. References were taken out of context. There seems to be a little bit of cherry picking because my recollection. Of, of, for example, the, the CFA's conversation about this proposal was that it was, it was. It, yeah, it, it might warrant further study, but that, that was in some ways, I think. Negated by everything that preceded and that was, you know, visual impacts, operational difficulty, security issues. And, and most important, the, the, the idea, the whole purpose and character of the, the National Mall, which is violated by this proposal. And, and, and finally, I mean, I could go on and on and on, but I, I just, I, I, I'm with. I'm, I, I'm with Mr. May. I, I'm, I don't know why we keep, this thing keeps coming back. When it has been comprehensively rejected. And, and it feels like we're now kind of getting into false claims territory and that's just not appropriate for this forum. And I, I, I hope as well that this is the last time because I have also heard this presentation half a dozen times. And it's while there are, there is some tinkering around the edges. The, the basic, the fundamental concept is, has been found lacking and I think it's time to move on.
Commissioner Wright, Commissioner Dixon. We'll keep moving. Commissioner Cash.
Thanks. I don't have much more to add. I do want to acknowledge the, the work that went into this idea and the contributions of Arthur Cotton Moore to, to not only this project, but the city, but. I do agree with a lot of the comments that this has been very thoroughly vetted. I don't think there's any question that, that a lot of folks have looked at it and in this case, it just turns out that it does not seem to be preferred. As an alternative by anyone. So I, I do agree that it might be time to move on. I do want to acknowledge that. This may have helped the conversation when it comes to pumps and raised the issue, but as far as, as this specific solution, I think it's, it's time has not come. So. I'll agree that I've, I've heard the presentation a few times. It's been an interesting idea to hear, but I think that, that it's been thoroughly vetted and it, it might be time to, to turn the page. So thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Davis, let's go back to Commissioner Dixon.
Yeah, I guess I didn't hear you ask for me. First of all, Julia, Judy, I know you've been at this a long time. And I remember when you launched your engagement in this process. And I respect that. I, I think that we have been looking at your proposal a, a number of times and. It's not getting, doesn't seem to be an attraction. I don't think that will stop you, but thank you for your tenacity. Thank, bye. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon and back to Commissioner Davis. Thank you.
Yeah, no, no additional comments for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Davenport.
I was just asking if the NCPC feels that the correspondence back to Norton and Raskin resolved the request that was put to the commission. By those offices.
Commissioner Davenport. We did, I know that letters were provided and we did not have any subsequent feedback from them on this, on this issue.
If I could add, the offices that we heard from, they were looking for a response. They were not advocating for the project. That's what I was told.
Thank you.
Chair White.
I have no comments at this time. I just want to overall thank the NCPC staff for their work on the important issue of flooding along the mall and in the federal triangle and certainly. Thank my colleague from district government, Mr. Bernard for his presentation.
Thank you. And Commissioner McMahon.
First, can you hear me well? I'm, I'm getting static on this online, but if you can hear me, I see head up and down gray. Not for my specific comment, which is, I've got no additional comments to add beyond what my fellow commissioners have said already. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I would also like to thank our presenters for being here today and providing their perspectives on how we understand these complex issues. Yes, Commissioner Dixon.
I'd like to, hopefully will be limited and proper. Would like to ask Ms. Feldman at least to be able to comment. If she could, she's got her hand up and I, I'm hoping, but I'd like to ask her to give her a chance to respond to this comment, please. Thank you.
Well, that would be a little out of the ordinary, but in deference to Commissioner Dixon, happy to do that. Ms. Feldman.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to respond. I do not want to argue with you. What I would just say is. If you listen to my words, again, we were not saying that the National Mall Underground is the only solution. We want it to be thrown into the mix, but what we were asking is not for everybody here to evaluate it. But for it to be part of a NEPA and one oh six evaluation of maybe five alternatives. But at least, see, we are not a federal agency. We have no standing. And so what we've asked you to do is say, we don't like it. We don't want cars. We don't want buses. We don't want, but it would be evaluated in a dispassionate NEPA and one oh six. I know the American Bus Association loved it. I know that the Holocaust Museum loved it. I knew that many of the museums around the mall. Now. You, you may disagree with people saying, well, we like to have parking or we like to have flood control. But unless there's a process, it's essentially each commissioner and each agency making the point we made at the end. When you have individual agencies with their different interests. And their own priorities that we don't want cars, that we don't care about certain things, we're not having a public consultation process. And we are a nonprofit. We have no standing except. A passion for trying something a little out of the ordinary of mixing things. We could take the cars out. That would be alternative B. We could take the buses out. That could be alternative C. We could remove the geothermal if it's considered, but if there's no conversation. Then there is no opportunity for public consultation and that's all we're asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Feldman. We appreciate that and we note your comments. I, I do appreciate the interest in, as Commissioner Dixon said, your passion and tenacity for promoting ideas. And on this particular idea that's been presented again, we of course have identified serious negative impacts with the particular idea in relation to other possibilities. So whether. Whether and how we figure this out as a nation, how we deal with flooding, we need to keep moving forward. We have future studies, continue to evaluate various solutions and. Work in collaboration for how we solve these issues. So thank you again for the presentations. I thought it was important that we come back at the request to have this put forward again. So thank you, Commissioner May and Commissioner Wright for your comments and we. Will keep moving forward with our agenda. So.
Chair White.
Chair White, yeah. And I was just going to say, we're having a, a significant problems with your audio connection. And so we'll continue to, yeah, continue to, to work with you on that as we go through the, the meeting, but it is. You're breaking up quite a bit, so I'll, I'll have our IT team. See what they can do, but just a heads up to you.
That would be great. Can you hear me now?
It's still kind of fuzzy.
Yeah, if, we'll, we'll try to listen attentively, but if we're a little slow when you call us, you'll know why.
Here. Well, I think at this point we want to move on to the next information presentation. Then can you hear that part?
Yes.
Good.
Thank you.
Well, all I was saying.
How about a good old fashioned reboot? Why don't you hang up and call back because some.
I may do that. I was going to ask Ms. Skylar and Ms. Sullivan if they want to. Move forward with the information presentation while I do that. Is it, is it still gargle? Because I'm getting no indication that there's a problem. Okay. I don't know. Have Ms. Sullivan start and I will be back.
Yes, I believe I'm up, so I'll get going. Let me share my screen. Okay. Good afternoon, Chair White and fellow commissioners. Today I'd like to give you a quick update on a couple of items related to the Urban Design and Plan Review Division at NCPC. First, key takeaways from the annual outreach program. Second, I'll give you a preview of the anticipated projects and master plans that NCPC will review this upcoming year. And third, Anne Skylar, NCPC's General Counsel, will provide an update on the recent agreement between NCPC staff and the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation. Regarding NCPC Section 106 obligation for the National Historic Preservation Act. The Plan Review Division recently completed its second annual outreach initiative for federal facilities located in the national capital region. As your familiar, NCPC's review extends to Prince George's and Montgomery Counties in Maryland. And Prince William, Loudon, Fairfax and Arlington Counties in Virginia, which are home to several large federal campuses, installations and national parklands. And zooming in on Washington DC, of course, you start to see all of the federal properties, many of which are owned by GSA and the Smithsonian in additional, in addition to National Park Service land. Our annual outreach initiative builds upon NCPC's Federal Capital Improvements Program and staff project coordination meetings that occur throughout the year. This past summer, we coordinated with approximately seventy-five different federal sites and installations, and these are a couple of the takeaways. The annual outreach initiative has resulted in improved communication between local jurisdictions and applicants. Local representatives participated in all of the outreach meetings over the summer and throughout many projects during this past year. I think a great example of this coordination is the work we've done with the Fort Belvoir North Area Team for their Master Plan and Distribution Center. They have coordinated every step of the way with Fairfax County and the project improved significantly throughout its review. And then the second takeaway, which is not surprising, is that telework is here to stay. Many applicants stated they are still trying to determine the new normal for telework and in-person work, so it will likely be another year before we have a clear picture of the impact on transportation management plans. Anecdotally, some facilities are back in the office three times a week while others have moved heavily towards telework. And as a result, may update their master plans with less infrastructure for parking. NCPC is coordinating with GSA to better understand these trends and will be updating the commission as we learn more in the future. So looking towards fiscal year twenty-three is going to be another busy year of master plans and memorials. There will be fewer Smithsonian projects this year because they are focused on long-range planning for the new museums. Examples of new development plans that we'll see this year include the Town Center Master Plan for Joint Base Andrews. And the Master Plan for Joint Base Meyer Henderson Hall. We'll see master plans for the Naval Support Activity Bethesda Campus, the Rally Training Center, Beltsville Agricultural Research Center, the Smithsonian Zoo. Pentagon Master Plan, Dulles Collections Center Master Plan and the Federal Law Enforcement Training Center. So a lot of master plans and then a couple of ones that we're already working on, we'll see again. We will also continue to review the Bureau of Engraving and Printing's New Currency Production Facility, the Long Bridge and the Revitalization of the Smithsonian Castle. And there will be a, a new project such as the Defense Intelligence Agency Headquarters at Fort Belvoir North Area. And possibly an early concept of the Bezos Learning Center at the National Air and Space Museum, among other projects. NCPC staff also coordinated with the National Park Service regarding memorial projects for this year. You will likely see several new memorials in the site selection phase, including memorials for the Texas Legation, Fallen Journalists, the First Division. Women's Suffrage Movement, Emergency Medical Services and the Global War on Terror. And finally, every year, the Plan Review Staff reviews the submission guidelines to ensure that they reflect the policy work that we do as an agency and the administration's guidance. This year, we will be taking a look at the submission guidelines to ensure they adequately address temporary security, namely the appropriate length of time for approval. Our latest diversity, equity and inclusion work and the administration's executive orders related to flooding and climate change. Finally, we will update the guidelines to reflect our recent agreement with the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation. On NCPC's occasional review of interiors, which Anne Skylar will now present to you in a little bit more detail.
Thank you, Diane. Good, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Today I'm going to brief you on a change to NCPC's approach to its National Historic Preservation Act, Section 106 procedures. And describe to you under what circumstances NCPC may have a 106 responsibility for interior work. Next slide. Just as a reminder, in the district, NCPC exercises zoning authority over federal projects. On federal land instead of the District of Columbia Zoning Commission. It also exercises zoning authority over district projects on district lands in the area known as the Central Area. When NCPC exercises zoning authority, it takes an approval action. This is not unusual. Because zoning is a regulatory authority, which is typically exercised in the form of, of a mandated action. So when NCPC takes an, an approval action for a project that constitutes an undertaking. As defined in the National Historic Preservation Act and regulations promulgated by the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation. NCPC as a federal agency must comply with the requirements of the Section 106 process. In the past, please excuse me, in the past, NCPC typically limited, limited its Section 106 consultations to exterior renovations. Because its zoning authority only extends to exterior components of a project. But recently, during the review of the Smithsonian Castle Revitalization Project. Several consulting parties questioned whether the Smithsonian and NCPC should conduct consultation on interior improvements proposed as part of the large project. The matter was presented to the General Counsel of the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation. Who note, who noted that in judicial interpretations of the National Historic Preservation Act do in fact require. NCPC's review of certain interior components of a building under certain circumstances in order to satisfy its 106 obligation. The legal concept that applies is whether interior and exterior components have independent utility from one another. In other words, do the interior and exterior components have separate and distinct functionality? Or do they only work together? Officially, this is known as the legal standard of independent utility and rational need. As a result. NCPC and the Advisory Council recently concurred on a memorandum that describes the extent of NCPC's limited interior. One or six obligation. The memo recognizes two areas of the Smithsonian Institution Castle Revitalization Project. Where interior and exterior changes must be reviewed. These include the new basement doors and the blast. These include the new basement doors and the blast-resistant windows. Because of excavation of the basement for habitable space, the Smithsonian will need to convert some basement windows to doors for emergency egress purposes. Since the exterior doors have no independent utility and indeed would not even be needed without the interior basement changes, review of portions of the interior basement are required for NCPC to satisfy its Section 106 obligation. The legal standard will also apply to blast-resistant windows. Interior historic finishes adjacent to the windows will be temporarily removed to allow installation of structural supports that will brace the windows. Because the windows cannot be made blast-resistant without the interior changes, both the exterior and interior changes must be reviewed. Next slide. Next slide. Okay. The agreement between NCPC and the Advisory Council specifies what interior components of the Smithsonian Castle will include NCPC to undertake Section 106 consultation, and how going forward, and how going forward, NCPC will apply the standard to other projects if NCPC has a 106 obligation. The determination going forward of applicability will be made by NCPC in consultation with the applicant and will only extend to interior areas impacted by this legal standard. If applicants wish to undertake a longer review or a greater review of interior, that is their choice, but NCPC will not participate. If you are, Diane, could you go back to the next slide? If you're interested in reviewing the entire agreement, it can be found at the website provided on the slide. Next slide. It's important to note that while the scope of NCPC's Section 106 obligation must, under certain circumstances, extend to interior portions of the building impacted by and related to exterior renovation, NCPC's review and approval of projects under the National Capitol Planning Act will continue to focus only on exterior elements of the project. That concludes my presentation, and Diane and I are both available to answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. Skylar. Can everyone hear me now?
Yes, much clearer.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you, Grace and Julia, for the help there. Are there any questions? If there are no questions, why don't we open it up to the Commission for Discussion? Could everyone please turn on your cameras? I will start with Commissioner McMahon, and then go in round robin format using our normal seating order. Please keep your webcams on during the discussion. So, Commissioner McMahon.
Thanks, Chair White. Just a couple of comments. Great presentations. Interested to see the expansion. It seems appropriate for Section 106 consultations as laid out. In terms of the, looking at the workload and things that are being done for NCPC for next year, it is big, it is significant, but I would like to thank the NCPC staff, especially for their cooperation with Fort Belvoir. I think that's been a great example of cooperation to meet both mission goals for the federal agencies in the area, along with NCPC's responsibility to ensure new work is done in an appropriate manner to support the built environment and the natural environment. Think that serves as a great example for that. And the conversation and comments about telework, I think, is critical moving forward. I understand that agency by agency will have different requirements for how many of their folks can telework or not telework based on the nature of the work they do. And so, hearing that recognize the conversation, I think, is important for us to consider as we continue our work over the next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner May.
Yes, I agree with the general comments made by Commissioner McMahon regarding telework and projects. The 106 issue is one that we've been heavily involved in, as well as the National Park Service is responsible for national historic landmarks. And so, we've been in the thick of that, and I've gotten briefings on that as it was happening. And, but I'm glad to know that that issue has finally been resolved. And as far as future projects, looks like it'll be a busy year, and we will have lots of memorials and other projects, non-memorial projects too. So.
Yes, indeed.
Much, much to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Commissioner Argo.
I have no additional comments or questions. Appreciate the work and the presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright.
No, I don't have any either. It's all good.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon.
I have, I have nothing else to add at this time. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Cash.
No questions or just comments, but I look forward to the upcoming year.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis.
I also have nothing to add. Thanks for the presentation though.
Thank you, Commissioner. Say, I lost my place here. Davenport.
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kozart.
Appreciate the preview of what's ahead and best wishes in getting that big workload done, both to the staff, but also to us too.
Thank you, Commissioner Kozart. I would also extend my thanks, and I think that's a very good way to wrap this one up. It's good luck to us all. It's an ambitious agenda. It's always helpful to know what's on the horizon, and we look forward to another busy year. I also want to say, I'm just so pleased that the outreach initiative has been so successful. I think that's always, you know, such a challenging aspect of the work when it seems so simple. But I really appreciate the effort that's gone into that. And as we review all of these upcoming master plans, we want to make sure we continue our close coordination with the local jurisdiction. So, thank you to the team for making sure we stay on that. If there are no further comments or questions, we have one last item on our agenda. Seeing none, we will move on to another information presentation on public space security, and we'll be hearing from Mr. Sherman.
Good afternoon, Chair White and members of the Commission. Before we get into the public space and security update, I want to say thank you for the kind words on my tending military retirement. I really appreciate it. The Commission's been very supportive of my two-decade-long Army Reserve career. So, thank you very much for those kind words. So, again, I'm Mike Sherman, Director of our Policy and Research Division, and I'm going to be joined today by my colleague Brittany Drakeford to provide you an overview on our urban design and security policies and an update on NCPC's public space and security initiatives. While the Commission reviews several perimeter security projects on an ongoing basis, staff thought it would be helpful and timely to provide you an overview of NCPC's past security efforts and explore specific case study examples that demonstrate our policies in action. And finally, Brittany will discuss our current public space and security initiative and work researching national and international best practices concerning public realm security measures. Over time, we've seen the evolution of security measures as a response to new threats. For example, up until the 1990s, you could easily stroll along Pennsylvania Avenue in front of the White House, and people could gather freely on the White House grounds. But in response to the evolving nature of security threats, access to the White House is now limited, and we have seen proposals by the US Secret Service for more stringent security measures that are impactful to the public realm. NCPC led early efforts to develop effective and effective security approaches and has been at the forefront of developing guidelines to address security, urban design, and public access in a thoughtful and balanced manner. This timeline provides a snapshot of the evolution of NCPC's key efforts addressing urban design and security, starting with actions taken after the Oklahoma City bombing in 1995. Our efforts have focused on developing policy recommendations that balance the needs of security while maintaining public access and protecting the urban design character of the nation's capital. These initiatives range from our work developing the Urban Design Security Plan in 2002, advising DoD on its facility standards in 2018, to hosting the Westide Deal with the Little Security Forum in 2021. One of the first new headquarter facilities located in an urban area, and one of the first major projects reviewed by the Commission after the 1995 Oklahoma City bombing, was the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives Headquarters Building, also known as ATF. The Commission reviewed the ATF Building in 1999. Responding to the June 1995 Presidential Directive to Upgrade Federal Facilities After the Oklahoma City Bombing, the site selection of the ATF Building sought to accommodate general office space, training rooms, and underground parking while providing the required setbacks. The emerging Noma neighborhood was selected for the new building, given its easy access to metro and the opportunity to integrate mixed-use facilities along the eastern edge of the complex. The Commission reviewed several security measures proposed by the applicant to include the required standoff distance, landscape features, and stringent blast-resistant requirements. Construction was completed for the ATF in 2008, and the analysis of the security features for this facility helped to inform the Commission's subsequent review of secure urban campuses like St. Elizabeth's. Following tragic events like the 1995 Oklahoma City bombing and the September 11, 2001 terrorist attacks, security needs were elevated, and unsightly temporary solutions often restricted access to public space. In response to these trends and threats, NCPC established the Inter-Agency Security Task Force in 2001. The task force's work culminated in the NCPC-prepared Designing Security for the Nation's Capital Report, which observed that existing security measures were piecemeal, disjointed, and distracted from the public realm. The report also noted that the closure of Pennsylvania Avenue reduced transportation capacity and adversely impacted economic development. The report further recommended that permanent street closures should not be used as perimeter security measures. One of the primary recommendations from the 2001 Designing Security for the Nation's Capital Report was for NCPC to prepare an integrated urban design and security plan for Washington's entire Monumental Core to balance legitimate security needs with the preservation of Washington's historic design character and its big-city vitality. Thus, the National Capitol Urban Design and Security Plan was released in October 2002. There were six goals of the plan, which included balancing perimeter security in the public realm, developing a menu of perimeter security design options, providing security measures that enhance the streetscape, limiting the clutter of the public realm, balancing perimeter security and economic development, and selecting measures that were cost-effective. One of the main features of the Urban Design Security Plan was the recommended use of streetscape elements at the security fence line. This image depicts an example of the use of hardened reinforced benches, lampposts, planters, and bollards as part of the perimeter security network. Over the years, NCPC's approach to perimeter security has evolved, moving away from the recommended bollards and planters to encouraging security solutions that are minimal, in scale, and seamlessly integrated into the building yard and landscapes. Since the release of the Urban Design and Security Plan in 2002, NCPC has continued to develop our policies through several initiatives to include the adoption of the new urban design element in 2016, our work with DHS and an Inter-Agency Security Committee on Wireless Infrastructure Planning in the Monumental Core, and our ongoing Public Space and Security Initiative. While all elements and policies of the compliance are referenced during a typical project review, specific policies related to security and public space are prominently featured in the urban design element and is the primary source policy document used by NCPC to review perimeter security proposals. I will next provide a few project examples and how our security policies are applied. As we review each of these examples, I will illustrate a range of different site conditions that were considered by the staff and the Commission during its review. For each project, we highlight the existing conditions at the time of the proposal, summarize the proposed security measures by the applicant, and a final approved design. This slide lists examples of a few of these major specific policies, and I'll color-code it to help you follow how we apply these to each project. These policies range from our recommendation to discourage permanent closure of streets or sidewalks within the right-of-way, discouraging the placement of security barriers in public spaces, to policies that recommend minimizing security barriers at intersections, corners, near crosswalks, and in other pedestrian areas. The first example is the Albert V. Bryan United States Courthouse in Alexandria, Virginia, which illustrates a project that reopened an existing street to the public while providing an appropriate level of security for the courthouse employees. At the time of its original construction in 1995, the need to establish physical standoff distance around the perimeters of the courthouse did not exist. This changed following the September 11, 2001 attacks, when the courthouse was selected as the primary location to try suspected terrorists. As you can see in the image on the left, the courthouse relied on jersey barriers and the closing of a key street thoroughfare to create standoff distance as a security measure. Courthouse Square South, a one-way, two-lane southbound street, was closed to vehicular traffic when the temporary perimeter security measures were installed. These security elements affected the visual environment and the pedestrian and vehicular circulation around the site. In 2012, GSA proposed the installation of permanent physical security elements at the courthouse that included permanent bollards, reinforced garden walls, and retractable bollards. During its final review, the Commission commended GSA, the US Marshal Services, and the District Court in the city of Alexandria in developing a security design that was consistent with NCPC's security policies, well-integrated into the urban fabric, and reopened an existing street to the public. The next project I would like to highlight is the Department of Commerce Headquarters located at the Herbert C. Hoover Building at 1401 Constitution Ave, Northwest. In 2012, GSA submitted the perimeter security proposal for the Hoover Building, which encompasses the entire city block. Nearly all of the security elements were located at the building's property lot. GSA's proposal included a cable rail system that was concealed by stone-clad walls and piers and were planned to the minimum height needed to meet security requirements. Among the key recommendations from the Commission during the concept review of this project was to simplify the overall security design by minimizing the amount of visual clutter and the total number of elements. As a result of the Commission and the applicant's close collaboration, the newly constructed perimeter security at the Department of Commerce resulted in a great example of a sensitive and balanced project, demonstrating many of our urban design policies and improved public realm. Our last example is the design of the revitalized Washington Monument grounds. This design is a bold and clear minimalist solution that turned a project originally funded to prevent terrorism into a handsome civic amenity. It demonstrates that the union of sound security and artful design is not only possible, but can also be functional and graceful. As you can see on the image on the left, a need to upgrade exterior security provisions came to the forefront after 9/11, leading to an invited design competition for the monument grounds. In 2015, Olin won the competition with an elegant security solution, and in the process, successfully proposed much-needed landscape improvements. Representative of this are the low-granted walls configured in a graceful pattern appropriate to the spirit of the mall and the monument. The walls are key to the design and serve to protect the monument, provide visitor seating, and assist with retaining a grade to make paths accessible. These interventions breathe life into the visitor experience and foster interaction with the cherished and iconic memorial. Going forward, we will continue to evolve our policies. And as Diane mentioned earlier, one of the areas that we will focus on are policies related to temporary security measures and the timelines for their placement. This concludes my portion of the brief, and I will now turn it over to Brittany Drakeford, who will discuss our recent work on public space and security. Thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Mike, for walking us through NCPC's policy history of using urban design practices to address security threats. In recent years, with an increase of vehicle ramming attacks and other growing threats, such as COVID nineteen and attacks from hate groups aimed at minorities, NCPC has adjusted its urban design security focus to include parks, plazas, and streets in order to protect the people in these spaces. The Public Space Security Initiative specifically focuses on public spaces that serve as the social and cultural hub of our communities. Throughout the COVID nineteen pandemic and subsequent closures, it was well documented that these spaces had high demand from residents and visitors alike. Moreover, many of these well-used and active public spaces host a variety of uses and programs which require varying and often flexible physical perimeter perimeter security measures as different events occur, such as farmers' markets, public performances, or even protests. Alongside place-making efforts, it is also important to assess vulnerabilities of staging these events that could impact these public uses while also helping us understand the related risk. To better assess these vulnerabilities and risks, NCPC has been working collaboratively with regional and national experts to hold public forums and workshops, conducting site visits of place-making events to observe existing temporary perimeter security measures and preparing case study summaries of these findings. NCPC formally launched the Public Space Security Initiative in September of two thousand and nineteen with the Open to the Public Rethinking Security and Access to Public Space Symposium. This two-day work, two-day symposium was held in partnership with the American Society of Landscape Architects and was a public event to explore emergent threats in public spaces, understand how good urban design and operational practice could then address these threats. The symposium engaged federal, local, and private design communities to better understand security expectations and featured panel discussions which included representatives from law enforcement and security experts, from agencies specifically noting the Department of Homeland Security, the U.S. Park Police, the New York Police Department, and other planning and design experts. To document the key role that architects and planners play in addressing security design challenges, NCPC staff prepared a proceedings report which recommends ten big ideas for rethinking security in public spaces. Generally, these ten big ideas focus on the importance of understanding the unique conditions through which security threats in public spaces emerge and the ways in which design solutions differ from protecting buildings. Thus, when rethinking design practices for protecting public spaces, it is critical to focus on the outcome, but also the process in which security measures are developed and recommended. Specifically, we note that it is important to bring together design and security professionals throughout the design process, consider security needs early in the site design or event design process as a way to prevent reactionary security measures, and also conduct risk assessments to determine the appropriate level of security requirements while also looking forward to identify suitable security solutions. Finally, these big ideas reiterate that while security solutions vary from place to place, public space security measures should consider shared resources, be sensitive to the surrounding context, rely on strong public and private partnerships, incorporate new technologies, and also build upon the research and lessons learned from other cities. As a way to better understand the real-time application of public space security measures, our staff has been working to coordinate with local business improvement districts and jurisdictions to develop criteria for evaluating public space security measures. In February of two thousand and twenty one, staff held a workshop in partnership with the Golden Triangle Bid where stakeholders reviewed Fairgate Square and examined potential threats and listed interventions. This workshop was centered around one guiding question: How can Fairgate Square be a more secure, accessible, and inviting public space for all? Throughout two thousand and twenty-two, staff have partnered with the District Department of Transportation and the District Office of Planning to learn more about their Open Streets and Streets for All grant program. This includes interviews with staff to learn more about the grant-making and permitting process as well as visiting public space activations along Benning Road and Georgia Avenue to observe the existing perimeter security measures that are used. After the January sixth events and the ongoing pandemic, we expanded upon the work of the two thousand and nineteen Symposium by hosting a second public forum entitled Open to the Public: What's the Big Deal with a Little Security in May of two thousand and twenty-one? This workshop was hosted in partnership with the District Office of Planning and was a virtual panel discussion on the impacts of security on public life and public access. Throughout this discussion, the panelists noted the importance of advocating for and maintaining safety and equity that results in well-designed public spaces regardless of potential threats. There were three important highlights from this discussion that were noted. First, public engagement is critical. Public space security planning should start with involving the public at the community level as well as ensuring a wide range of government commitment to meet very constituent and policy needs. Second, the scope of security design planning should be a balance between long-term policies and those that are adaptable or which have security measures with defined end dates in order to be flexible based upon changing circumstances and lesson learned. And then third, and quite possibly most importantly, design can support or hinder the flow of people and other security priorities. For example, the heights of built elements such as planters can directly impact people's movement through public spaces. Finally, our team is developing in-depth case studies with feedback from international and domestic cities, including New York, Boston, London, Canberra, Berlin, Copenhagen, Las Vegas, Ottawa, and Bogota. We are seeking to collect information from partner cities that center around the implications of precinct security, how agencies coordinate for precinct security measures, which also includes permitting, what types of perimeter and precinct security measures are currently being used, and how perimeter and precinct security measures along their most activated corridors are evaluated. Staff is also working with the International Division of the American Planning Association to identify additional case study partners for this initiative. Responses from these discussions will be used to develop a best case, a best-practice case study report and inform the agency's update to the urban design element of the federal comprehensive plan and also support the development of a project, pilot project for the Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative. As this work continues, staff is working to finalize our case study examples and have begun receiving feedback from our partner cities. We are also reviewing the perimeter security inventory and assessment as it may also inform the urban design element update as well. We anticipate bringing an update to the urban design element to the Commission by late fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. With that, this concludes our presentation, and Mike and I are available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Drakeford and Mr. Sherman, for the excellent presentation. Do commissioners have any questions? Hearing no questions, at this time, I'd like to open it up for discussion if everyone could turn on their cameras. We will use our round-robin format, starting with Commissioner Argo, and let's keep our webcams on during the discussion. So Commissioner Argo.
You're on mute.
Can you guys hear me? Oh, thank you, Commissioner Wright. I thought it was me this time.
I won't even try to reconstruct what I said. Start over. No, I appreciate it very much. I took a lot of notes. I think it's it's very timely. We have, you know, we're unique, I think, in many ways in the District of Columbia and looking at and looking at security, which probably differs. In some ways, it's similar probably to what other, you know, urban centers are looking at, but we we do have a uniqueness that that needs to be addressed, and it appears like we're on a on a good course to do that. I appreciate it. It was a lot of good information. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright.
Well, I think we used to be unique, Commissioner Argo, but we're not anymore when when people started using vehicles as, you know, missiles. And and that's all I would say. I mean, I think we we've done a number of these projects. Thank you for including them. And 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 it's it's always, I think the challenge is to actually receive each project with 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 a or treat each project with a fresh perspective, and I'm mindful of that. You don't have to be a security guy to understand that the threat threats continue to evolve. To wit, we we haven't built this project yet, but we brought the Lot Nine of the Department of Agriculture, which is a parking lot, which is often used, or at least weekly, it's used for a farmer's market. And we were in the middle of designing this thing, not unlike the Commerce Department where we had gotten, I don't know what I was thinking. It never occurred to me that we would fail. The the we got concept approval on that one, and then we kind and then the the design started to devolve as we got into it and we started again and reinvented the concept, and I'm so glad we did. So for for everyone who's got jobs similar to mine, all I'd urge is a fresh look every time. When we got to this recent project at the parking lot, we, you know, it's always, it's kind of the gospel of security is or perimeter security from the design standpoint is to hide it, make it go away, make it look like something else, but we realized, oh, you know, if we're talking about a bunch of panicked people who are being, you know, who are subject to a vehicular threat, we can't hide the the security elements because in a panic, they will be, you need to see them. You need to know that you need to jump over a rail that is, it can't be hidden in in shrubbery, which is complicates things further. So each project needs to be approached with a fresh set of eyes and and accepting that that the threat is different in every environment and don't take anything for granted. The only thing that's dangerous about these, not dangerous, that's a bad word. The only caution I would offer is that the the final version of this be issued with caveats, caveats up the wazoo. This is not a template. There's no formulaic approach to it, and every single project needs to be evaluated in it on its own terms. And and if you can say that throughout the document in big glaring lights, that would probably be helpful.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Always thoughtful comments. Commissioner Dixon.
Yes, first of all, the staff did a great job of presenting, and I think that Commissioner Wright and others at the Commerce are great. I agree with her, though. You can't really anticipate everybody's. There's always somebody looking for another way to get at you, and they say you'll never know the one that gets you. But we have to keep vigilant, and we're trying to do that, I think.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Cash. Commissioner Cash may have stepped away. Believe us, yes, thank you. Sorry about that. Commissioner Davis.
Yeah, thanks. I appreciated the presentation on this increasingly relevant topic. No further comments to add. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Davenport.
Yes, thank you. Important topic. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you. Commissioner Kozart.
Thanks to the staff for the presentation, but also for the collaboration with the district around this issue for for the last several years and look forward to continuing to collaborate and learn together.
Thank you. Commissioner May.
Thank you. So I I I say I'd have to agree with Commissioner Wright's comments about the fact that each site is different in its in the security considerations and in the potential solutions. And I can tell you, we have had the experience of having to revisit the the strategy and even approved concepts. And sometimes, like, I mean, I will say, Jefferson Memorial, we still have not found the right answer to it. Even though we did at one point have a concept for how we would move forward with security at that location. And I I would just, I mean, I have a few things to say about the approach that I think that we should be encouraging. One is to make sure that we are starting by looking at the problem and not the solution. The issue so often, particularly with security professionals, is that have a preconceived notion of what the solutions should be. And that does not always, it's not always the only solution. It's a heavy-handed solution, right? Not every single approach will need a K-12 barrier. So it's it's important to understand really what the what the risks are, what the dangers are, and then think holistically about how to solve them. And it requires zooming out a little bit. It requires challenging some assumptions. And I think that, you know, again, start with the with an understanding of the problem, not with any any preconceived notions of what the solution would be. I would also say that we have to be careful about what we attempt to protect because there, you know, Washington with the many, many crowds of people in many, many locations extensive potential for for bad things to happen when inflicted by, you know, bad people. I I just, I I feel, though, that we can't, we cannot try to protect everybody in every circumstance. It just, it would, we would wind up with every every public facility being fortified, every piece of public space fortified at extraordinary cost and for effectively very little benefit. I think we have to be practical about how we try to approach these things and balance the, you know, the impacts on public space. And I mean, when I mean public space, I don't mean just parks. I mean, you know, every bit of space that the the public is occupying. And I also would say that one of the the key things about NCPC's role in this is making sure that people who are working on these issues do not stay in their silos. We have, it's working with, even even among themselves, they have, they only have their own perspective, and they have blinders comes to the the views of others, even within their own agencies. And that certainly can be true when, you know, when dealing between agencies as well, and many, many projects wind up having an overlap between these agencies. So I I guess I've probably said enough, but I appreciate the staff is and trying to provide guidance. It is especially important us in the Park Service, I'm sure, as it is for to have these policy and guidance as back for the points that we are trying to make. Not just because we want to make sure we get our NCPC approval. I mean, we do want that, but we also, you know, we want to believe that what NCPC is the right approach and let everyone to understand that. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon.
Thank you. Lots of good comments from the rest of the crew. I think the key thing I heard was, you know, Commissioner Wright, backed up by Commissioner May, is that every project is different, and everyone has different requirements and different solutions to meet those requirements and take meet those requirements and take care of the community. So looking forward to how those impacts are work in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions on this item? I would just like to add myself that it was an excellent presentation that really gives us a good understanding about how our work is evolving on this very important area of concern, and I really appreciate the collaboration you have with other cities to take a look at how, you know, we address these emerging issues. So not only the local partnerships, but international partnerships and in trying to figure out how to do the best, the best work possible. So hearing no other questions or items of business, I want to thank everyone for participating today. This concludes our open session agenda. Our next regular commission meeting will be on Thursday, December first, two thousand and twenty-two at one P.M. So again, if there is no further business, this session is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone.